To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to the regular school committee meeting of Monday, July 17th, 2017. This is your notice that this meeting is being electronically recorded. We will jump right into the business agenda tonight and start with an update for myself on the MSBA Atterboro High School project. Not too much to report since last time, or in fact, maybe there is, I'm not sure if we've met since we released the taxpayer numbers or not, but the numbers for the average household in the city have been released. That's of $393 a year on average for our average household in Atterboro of $280,000 approximately. The school building committee has a meeting before the MSBA on July 27th in Boston, and at which time we'll discuss our most recent submit to them and also answer any questions they have and get any feedback and comments or suggestions that they have for us. That species continuing to meet twice a month throughout the summer, so I'm sure when we meet again in August, we'll have more of an update, but we're continuing to move forward and make real progress here. Any questions? Moving on to the next item on our agenda, Strategic Plan Progress Report. Assistant Superintendent Regan, carry us through this report, please.
Sure. Thank you Chairman Withers. So first, I'd like to go back to our presentation in January where we spoke specifically that our strategic plan is really a plan about strategic thinking. It's not a plan where you can check off boxes and say that we've completed small tasks. It's about changing culture and moving the district forward. And so that's what this plan is really about and takes us time in order to move the district in the right direction. As we move through each of the processes that were put into place when building this plan, it was built upon our essential beliefs, what we believe in, our mission, why we're here to do what we do, with three overarching goals that have objectives and action plans, all based around the four pillars, leading to our vision and where we are headed. The next slide here talks specifically about the whole plan itself and is a summary of everything on one page. We have three goals listed that I'll be addressing this evening. The first goal speaks specifically about guided planning, second goal speaks specifically about quality learning experiences, and the third goal speaks to community engagement. So for Goal One, Guided Planning, one of the first initiatives that we tackled was modifying our professional development. The Professional Growth Council worked together this year with the Professional Development Committee. They released a survey to teachers. They also had professional culture focus groups where they spoke to teachers across the district asking them how their culture is in each of the buildings. There were specific goals that were, I guess, that came out of the plan that was written, and from that, we were able to modify the professional development so that we had targeted PD this year where teachers will remain in their building and they'll be able to work collaboratively together on initiatives that we already have in the district. And we've also changed it to include choice pathways, so teachers can choose a specific pathway that they are interested in. For example, we have a technology pathway. We have an inclusive practices pathway. Teachers choose that pathway so that the professional development that they're receiving has some continuity to it and it's not districted. The district commencement team was created. This team, the mission of that team is to create a district event for commencement so that it's a district-wide celebration and to include teachers and students involved in the process. So this year, we had seniors visit some of our middle schools. We'd like to scale that up next year so that they also visit the elementary schools, and seniors also wrote teachers' personal notes inviting them to come to graduation. So there were some teachers that came to graduation this year and we'd like to scale that up for next year.
Did you notice if there was any increase over what we've traditionally experienced the last few years as far as teacher attendance from other schools?
I think there was because several teachers received personal letters from students and there's something about receiving a personal note from a student that you had in the past that's graduating. So there was an increase and then we're hoping that as we continue to do this through the years, there'll be even more participation from our teachers.
Even if they weren't there in person, I heard from many teachers who watched it from home, many, many teachers who did that. So that's always a great option, too.
And finally, the district guidance team is still continuing to do their research. We had Lisa Harney come and do a presentation. She's with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education specifically around individualized learning plans. And we also had a presentation from Navyats, which we've purchased. The team is represented well from teachers and administration from all three levels. And our goal next year is to put together the district implementation plan and begin our rollout for the ILPs during the 18, 19 school year. For quality learning, as mentioned earlier, the professional culture report was written and professional culture goals are in the process of being created so that they're in our professional development plan. Three things that came up out of this plan was to provide more time for teachers to collaborate, to make connections and find balance between our specific curriculum programs that we have and what they'd like to do to engage our students, and then also provide PD that incorporates all of our initiatives, as mentioned before. Another committee that was developed through this is the District Recognition Committee, which is also part of the Professional Growth Council. That committee brought back its first professional teacher status event this year, which was successful, and we recognized teachers for completing their first three years of teaching in Atterboro. We've also expanded our MCIEA initiative, which is the Massachusetts Consortium for Innovative Education Assessment. We have three new schools that are participating in it this year and have also started their training this summer, actually. So this year, we'll have Thatcher, Wamsetta, and actually, a small group from the CTE program will be participating as Also, we have schools that will be participating in PBIS Tier Two, which is a small targeted intervention for students who may not be, I guess, reacting appropriately to the Tier One intervention, but these are students that just need some extra support. So Tier Two is being rolled out for specific schools, Studley, Brennan, Hyman Fine, Willett, and the high school. Their training for that will begin in the fall.
How were those schools chosen?
They were chosen based upon where they are in implementing Tier One, how far they are with that rollout.
Mr. Storff?
What's the pros and if there's any cons regarding the MCIEA and how does a school get selected and/or applies to be part of that?
So for the MCIEA, we're working on it, I guess, across the district. This year, during our targeted PD days, teachers will have the opportunity to collaborate with each other and kind of create their own performance assessments or their own performance tasks together as a team. And then we're hoping to scale this up next year and have it spread throughout the entire district. But we're chipping away at schools each year so that it'll be a district initiative within the next year or so. Schools are chosen based upon need and based upon desire to be a part of that team. And finally, community engagement. Again, we want to thank all of the partners that have supported us this year and who are planning on continuing to support us next year. We also want to take this time to thank everyone who's been supporting the district in their travel opportunities abroad and in the country. So we had a presentation in June that spoke specifically about the experiential learning opportunities that we have here in the district. So for middle school, we'll continue to have our Grade Eight Washington DC trip, England-Scottland trip, as well as the Grand Tour of Italy. That'll be coming up within the next couple of years. For the high school, excuse me, we have Philadelphia and New York City coming, the Grand Canyon, as well as Germany, Poland, and the Czech Republic. Those will be coming up as well. We also want to highlight our participation with the YMCA for specific initiatives that we're working on with them. One is the Healthy Living Consortium. So next year, Brennan Middle School will have water filling stations installed in each of the sections where the current bubblers are right now or water fountains. We'll be doing that in the fall. And then this year, Wamsetta Middle School participated in a mentoring program, which we're looking to scale up into other middle schools here as well. Students had the opportunity to participate. We had it so that the mentoring days were also the days of the late bus during our after-school enrichment programs. So students had the opportunity to go even if they didn't have transportation. We also want to make sure we thank the support that we've received from individual donations throughout the year, especially our PTOs and all of the parent groups throughout this year. We're very grateful for all their support and all their work in helping us reach our So our focus moving forward, we've done a lot, but we also have a lot more work to do moving forward. Specifically for Goal One in Guided Planning, we need to continue to work on teasing out our elective continuum, sending out a survey to families to see specifically what they would like to be a part of the elective process. We want to continue to work on the district implementation plan for the ILPs through the district guidance team. We want to make sure that we continue to research recommendations for schooling parameters. We've been working on our district technology plan over the past couple of years and in working hard to infuse technology, but it's important that we put together a formal plan and structure in place to have something to work toward. And finally, community engagement. We want to make sure that we continue to work on a district engagement plan, putting something, again, informal in place, our district communication plan to engage the community in our work, and also to provide more opportunities for continuing an adult education. We currently have a small foundation of offerings that are listed under the community tab on our website, but we'd like to increase those opportunities for our community here in Atterboro.
Any questions?
I just had one. The information that we had gotten, there was a lab goal that said Maple. I don't know, there are a lot of acronyms out there. I don't know what Maple stands for.
Maple, oh, and the informational piece. Maple is another consortium that we're learning information about. It's the Massachusetts Network for Personalized Learning. And currently, some of the administrators and teachers in our district have went to other districts like Natick and Burlington to see what their technology infrastructure looks like and what their instruction looks like in a one-to-one learning environment. So we're visiting those schools and looking at their technology plans and taking the opportunity to learn from them. And that's really what Maple provides us the opportunity to do.
Okay. Thank you.
Where are we at this point in the review of grade spans and redistricting and those matters? This question I get a lot.
Right. We're still in the research phase of that. We have some possible proposals in place, but those proposals still need a lot of work to look specifically at transportation and redistricting and specific levels of what works as far as what's the best options instructionally for our students, special education. We're still in the research phase and we're still in a needs assessment phase right now, but...
So are you still researching solely what's best for the educationally, or have you started looking into the fiscal impacts of the different possibilities at this point?
We're still in the education phase, but we will be getting into the fiscal pieces as well.
So to follow up on that question, are you indicating that right now, you're just focusing on what would overall be best educationally, but even if you determine something is best educationally, then the next step would be to look at it and see if it's feasible based on school buildings and the disruption of redistricting and so on and so on. So right now, it's really just, is it a good idea? And then you'll bring that to us and then we'll have to look at the rest.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you.
Are you going to, when you have a report that's presented, will it be based on what, just based on the first, and then you'll look into the rest, we'll look into the rest of it, or are you going to, it's going to be a comprehensive report that looks into the educational, financial buildings that we have now?
It'll be a comprehensive report.
Great. So we don't want to get everyone's, you know, hopes up is the wrong word, but thinking we might be leaning one way and then six months later say, well, this is what we told you is the best idea, but we can't pull it off.
I have had some constituents recently talk to me, said that they've heard rumor, and I want to see if there's any truth to it, that they're looking to do something like this soon, maybe not next school year, but the school year after. Is that kind of the mindset if this turns out to be something that's feasible and recommended, that it would be not, obviously not next school year, but the school year after?
I would say it's something that we're hoping to do within three years or so.
And that would almost definitely include a redistricting, which would be, I would imagine, very disruptive, so...
Three or more years.
A lot of positives to see in change like that. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Regan. Mr. Potato, you want to join Good evening.
Hi.
Preliminary end of year position, fiscal year 17?
We're still closing out the year. I wanted to let the committee get a sense of where we will probably land. Right now, the funds available are about $450,000. However, part of the reason the number's that high is we had a reassessment of retirement costs. Typically, retirement costs go up between $40,000 and $80,000 a year. We budgeted 60. It went up 130. So we tried to offset the unbudgeted number by accumulating some more dollars at the end of the year. In addition, we're returning approximately $23,000 to the city in transportation budget. So when you take those two things into account, our ending number is about in the mid 360s, 365-ish, or within a couple of thousand dollars of where we were last year.
Sounds like magic to get it that close to last year.
No, it's nerve-wracking. It's, yeah, sorry.
I mean, on a percentage basis, I always think it's important that we get out there because it's, you know, you hear 400,000, 300,000. It sounds like a lot, but on a percentage basis...
On a percentage basis, it's actually smaller than last year because the base is bigger. So it's just under four tenths of one percent. It's probably closer to three tenths.
On a budget that can't go in the red.
Right.
Great. Good work.
Absolutely. And there's always more bills to come in.
So do you think in August, we'll have a...
We'll have a solid number for the August meeting, but again, we're still doing some things.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions on that? Summary of summer facilities projects?
Yeah, I wanted to conclude this now. I think that this committee, and certainly committees preceded it, have typically been involved and active and visit buildings, talk to people. We just discussed concerns the community had about redistricting. And they see a lot of activity, but you never really get a lowdown of what exactly we're doing and what the expectation should be when school opens up in the fall. On the left-hand column is a list of all of the projects we're involved in. This is primarily our staff, but also involves vendors, especially where it comes to the capital projects of boilers and air conditioners. And then the schools and what schools are participating in the given projects. We had another one that we maybe should have included, maybe not, where we're revamping the serving lines, lunch serving lines in all of the elementary schools, but that is not expected to be done until after school started. So I didn't, I didn't put that in there, but that's about $150,000 worth of work, that project. But, so we've got, we've got a significant amount of work to do over the summer. Some of the buildings are much more challenging. This building, Brennan, Studley, are occupied to a significant degree with programs. The other buildings occupied to a lesser degree with programs. So the, you know, occupied buildings to do this kind of work in is very difficult. So I just wanted to provide a summary to the committee as to what is going on in each building. Also, regarding the boiler projects that we all talked about at length over the past year, Willett is almost done. And I don't know, I don't recall who had the opportunity to go visit Willett, sort of in the before stage, but I think you'll be, if you did do that, you'll be shocked at what you see now. So love to have you come down and take a look at that. Would like to invite the council down because a number of them went through that building. It's shocking at how different it is.
Is this level of activity over the summer for maintenance of our buildings typical of a usual?
Yeah, this is, this is pretty typical. Again, we have a little more capital going out with the boilers and the air conditions, but aside from that, that's a pretty typical summer.
I think that's important and also timely, especially in light of the high school project that's going on and some of the comments that you hear that, you know, questioning maintenance levels of the buildings and to see the, you know, the amount of maintenance that actually does go into these buildings on a yearly basis, you know, I think is important for the public to see. So I think this is a report worthy of having on an annual basis going forward, both so the public can know and so that we can make sure that we're keeping up with what we should be for these large and costly buildings and infrastructure. Mrs. Gilson?
I echo that sentiment. Also, I had one question about the high school gym floor refinishing.
Yes.
I remember in some of the other subcommittees, we were getting close to being like one of the last times we'll be able to refinish it. Is this true?
Yeah, this is it.
This is it? This is the last time we'll be able to refinish that floor?
Yep.
And so speak to that. What does that mean?
If you, if you ever saw the wood used for a wooden floor, there's a surface that's typically half inch, maybe a little less of solid wood. And when you finish the floor, you have to sand it down and then put the finishing on it. Sanding takes some of that surface off. Sanding over 60 years takes the surface down to where you start hitting the supports in the wood, the nails and whatever they use to support the wood to the base. We, when you do that, there are some tricks you can play. You can take some of the sawdust, put some glue, and create a sort of a little cover, a little Band-Aid, but that only goes so far. And so we're at a point where that's, that's not going to be working anymore and we need to do something, preferably build a new school.
Mrs. Storff?
So to put it in context, obviously, the plan we need this to be the last time and hopefully, a new school will be in the future. But if it wasn't, what would be the cost of a whole new gym floor?
Oh, my God.
Because this is the type of discussion, I think, that we need to have to show that the type of repairs that this facility, this building is going to need are significant. We know that that's significant because we've been doing it for years, but the gym floor, for example, is something that would have to happen that would be additional.
Yeah, I could, I could get you a solid number, but I would think 50 to 75 and maybe even more, just to put a floor down. I don't know how many square feet that is, but we could get a pretty solid number on that for replacing. could get a pretty solid number on that for replacement. Beyond anything, our budget would accommodate, certainly.
Any other questions on this report? Mr. Tyler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I think, Mark, the main point is we gotta do something because it's been too long. You can only keep sanding it down and refishing it so many times before, you know, you're at the degree that we're at now. So, I do want to congratulate you on all these capital improvements finally getting done after many, many years. There's a lot of happy people over at Willett that I've spoken to. Very happy individuals. I have a quick question about, once we're done with our technology upgrades that we had planned and what we've already done, what is basically the percentage of students that we'd be able to have that would, if, whether it be MCAS or PACC or whatever, with the online, what is our percentage rate right now that would be able to take that test?
Is it two grades simultaneously? We're, we're gonna be in a position in the spring to conduct standardized testing in two grades simultaneously at our elementary schools and middle schools, which is something we're actually required to do, we signed up for. So, that would be, you know, basically devices in 50% of the students' hands. And then, if you were to expand the pilot we did at Willett with the, bringing your own devices, we would be in a position to, you know, be saturated to, to, for the most part in this year coming.
Is it 50%, which would be two grades essentially because of the number of devices?
Yeah.
Is that what technology that's owned by each school, or is that technology that would travel?
No traveling.
Okay. So, effectively, each elementary school has enough laptops?
For two grades.
For two grades, and same can be said?
Well, during the year, we haven't, we haven't executed everything yet, but.
By this, this goal is a spring, spring test?
Yeah, we'll certainly have it in place by January to be prepared for March, March testing.
And it's also safe to say at this point, we have the Wi-Fi capability to support the?
Network, we'll certainly support it.
I think my point being too, where leaps and bounds were from where we were three years ago at this stage. And that's, it's important because technology, we all know it's the future. It's, it's for the kids, it's the best thing for the students, there's savings in it, you know. So, again, I just congratulate, especially Mr. Murphy, you know, the ones that were taught on a couple of years ago, implementing the plan and the district and fulfilling that. So, again, like it.
Thank you, Mr. Tyler. Mr. Larson?
Yeah, I just, I want to just go back to one of the other capital issue, capital improvement issues. You know, one of the things when we kind of keep kicking this whole high school project around, I keep thinking about keeping my fingers crossed that so many of these things stay together long enough that we can build a new high school. And if we're down to the last layer, I mean, realistically, we're three or four school years away.
Yeah, we're.
From playing basketball on a new floor.
Yes, we're, yes, that's a great point.
So, sometimes you make me very nervous. About what's left in some of these.
Yeah, and we're in a similar condition with the heating system, which has been mentioned many times. We had, we've got separate, you know, if you've ever seen the boilers here, they're, they're the size of a small house. And we've got separate boilers that heat systems in the cafeterias. We, you know, as you can see below, we do general inspections and maintenance of equipment throughout the district. And when we went into those boilers at the end of the year, they failed, they're done. We're trying to figure out if we can manage not using the specific equipment that those boilers served over the course of the next three or four years, or if we have to do something else. So, those boilers have failed. We're doing some major repairs to the building boilers, which had some issues, you know, typical for a device that's, you know, 60 years old and sort of the stuff you saw at Willett. So, we're, you know, we've got a lot of bubble gum and paper clips and, you know, it, it's inevitable that the community sees that as possibly ignoring maintenance, but that's not the case. You know, the, the replacement value of the boiler systems are the millions.
No, but some of the things are just old.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just, it's not a maintenance issue. It's just, you can't drive a car for 60 years.
Yeah. So, yeah, we've, we're, we're facing that every day, you know, steam pipe leaks, failures.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Looks like you're still on the hot seat, Mr. Potato, with transportation.
Yeah, I wanted to give the committee an update on this as the situation of the transportation office moved very quickly over the last month. We had two and a half people in the office. We had a, an operations manager and a scheduler and a halftime clerk. And for three different reasons, all three people are, are gone or are leaving. The clerk retired, deservedly so, and actually went beyond her retirement to help us out, did a great job. The scheduler had some health issues and the contract was not renewed. And the operations manager has an opportunity to become an assistant business manager at another district and is taking that opportunity. So, working feverishly to, as I tell the super tank, go find some more three-legged fish because that, that set of skills is a, is a different thing and hard to find. We had postings out for a month now and had very little activity. So, I actually did some active recruiting through people I know and brought some folks in that we're sort of in a process with. Not sure if that's going to pan out, but we're gonna do everything we can to avoid, you know, costs because this is a very critical time for that office.
That was gonna be my question is, how are we handling, you know, preparations for the beginning of the school year? And we know that's, it was different, in the best year, there are, you know, difficulties that arise. And as we've seen in the not-optimal years, it can, you know, lead to, you know, a real, real problem with a lot of appropriately angry families. So.
Yes.
Where are we as far as?
Well, I've already met with the special education director to go over communication from now through September to make sure that that channel is open and clear because it's going to be critical to get the year started. We are recruiting, we're, instead of staffing the office with two and a half people, we may staff the office with two full-time people. And, again, we have a, a couple of people in mind. If that pans out, we'll be very happy. If it doesn't, I just, you know, I'll, I'll be carrying a couple of balls I don't want to be carrying.
Mrs. Storrs?
So, regarding transportation, over a year ago, we changed the fee-for-service policy. So, that was in effect this last school year, is that correct?
Yes.
So, there should really be no changes for constituents out there between last year and this year, is that correct?
Thankfully, yes.
So, the reason I, I ask is because, again, some constituents had approached me saying that they recently received letters indicating that they need to pay fee for service when last year they were, they did not. So, I'm just wondering, is that just a disconnect? Is that something that's probably incorrect, or is there some change that may have happened to cause something like that?
There's no change that should have caused that. So, assuming the students are at the same school.
They are, yes.
They're going from first to second grade?
No, no, it's not, not one of those because I had indicated that the policy was very clear, that the first and second grade was no fee. And then, of course.
Have them call me and I can, I can get it straightened out for them.
Yeah, that's pretty much what I recommended. Thank you.
And you did mention about, you know, making sure our special education is up?
Because we have changes on both ends. Transportation office changing as well as.
Right. So, let's just make sure because, you know, I don't think E S Y, I don't think transportation got the information in a timely manner. So, let's make sure we keep a real handle on the special education department getting that information to them in time because I think they were, letters didn't go out, they had to make phone calls because it was so late. So.
Yeah, yeah.
Angious parents out there.
Mr. Tyler?
Thank you, Mr. Jim. Mark, at what point does it make sense to sub some of this stuff out? I mean, it's, you know, we seem to always kind of go through these transportation issues. And if we have a vendor that, I mean, we've talked about the cost before, and we like having the flexibility of having our own drivers, our own buses, and, and I get all that. But, you know, at some point, if it affects the service, then I think we need to really look into, you know, whether or not our current vendor and bussing is something they're interested in or whatever. I know the answers before, but.
Yeah, I think that's a fair question. I, I think if you speak to the folks who participate, you know, the, the bus companies that participate in regular transportation, that they're reticent to do the kind of stuff our people do, which is that, that sort of juggling and balancing of out-of-district and McKinney-Bento and intra-district stuff and all of those things that could escalate costs pretty quickly. That basically, that, that's really what our fleet does, is it addresses these high-cost things that happen regularly through the course of the year. And, and they typically want no part of that. That, you know, they want systemic, regular, you know, clock it in every week stuff, which they're very, very good at. And all of this disruptive stuff, they, you know, it's, it's tough. So, you know, I think, I think that there's a significant cost advantage for us to do what we do, not, and not go beyond that, which we've discussed before about big buses and that sort of thing. But at some point, when you can't find any more three-legged fish, it, it may make sense to just say, listen, we just, we're out of this business.
You'll keep us posted?
I will.
I don't think any of us want to be here that first weekend in September sweating in the lobby.
No, no.
Thank you, Mr. Potato. Collective bargaining agreements. Mrs. Singer, you want to join us? So, there are actually two agreements to hopefully ratify tonight. The first, one-listed administration association is actually not ready at this point.
It's just waiting for legal to just finalize the final draft.
We all know how our lawyers can be, so we'll give them all the time they need.
No, they've been very good. They've been very responsive.
Custodial association. Mrs. Singer, just wanted to take us through the high points. And just on custodial association and maintenance mechanics, the, Mr. Potato, correct me if I'm wrong, the budgetary impact is, is a 3% increase for, for each, essentially. It's not a 3% cost of living, but would you take cost of living and steps, even though there's some differences in the agreements and how we get there, it's a 3%?
It's a 3% cost to each agreement. One group doesn't have anybody on the scale, so that, that is a 3% quota. The other group has members on the scale, so it's a different configuration. But the total cost on each basis is the same.
So, I believe the custodial association has a few members on the steps. So, they're getting a two-point, the agreement provides for a 2.5% cost of living adjustment and their step increases. And then, the maintenance mechanics association actually has no members on the steps, and so they get a 3% cost of living adjustment. There were some other minor adjustments regarding sick, sick time, buyback, and longevity pay. Mrs. Singer?
Yes, these were very similar. Both the custodial and the maintenance have a sick buyback that was implemented to reduce the use of sick time. And so, there's a little bit of an incentive if they don't use any of their sick time, or if they use one day or two days above that, there, there isn't anything. They also, upon retirement, already have a sick buyback that was increased by $5 for them in this contract.
Do we have any questions, Mrs. Storrs?
One-on-one, I'm assuming that contracts as, has been the standard in the past is, even though it passed July 1st, and the current contract did end July 1st, it's green-stemmed, so, so they still have contracts, and I wanted to indicate that. But effectively, any agreement we make will be retroactive back to July 1st?
For these, for these two unions, that is the case.
Any other questions? And they're both three-year contracts from 2017 to 2020. So, we'll take each one, one by one. We'll start with custodial association, a motion to approve contract for 2017 to 2020.
Second.
Mrs. Storrs?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Withers, yes. Mrs. Gales?
Yes.
Mrs. Sawyer?
Yes.
Alright, motion passes, thank you. And a motion to approve the contract for the maintenance mechanics association for 2017 to 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Sawyer?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a comment, I'm, you know, Mark brought it up early and kind of let it pass, and I can't let it pass now. You know, when, first of all, we're very lucky to have the maintenance team that we have. You know, Mr. Brusso and these maintenance guys who work under him, they're, they're first-class act. I know each one of them individually, they're, they're hard workers. So, in, when I hear about, you know, neglecting facilities, there's, there's nothing that can be more telling the truth. These guys are spending 55 to 60% of their time just on the high school, never mind the other eight buildings they have to do. So, they, they do a wonderful job. There's, there's no neglect of the buildings taking place. I can guarantee anybody that. And again, I just want to say, we're lucky to have these maintenance guys that we have, and I'm glad we finalized the contract.
I, if I may, Mr. Chairman, they're acutely aware that they serve students. I mean, they serve students by fixing pipes and doing electrical work and doing property, but they, they're acutely aware of the students and their responsibility to the students. They are, they're a great group of guys.
Thank you, Mr. Potato. And Mr. Tyler, Mrs. Storrs?
Yeah, I just want to comment, both of the groups from, from the experience that I had serving on one of them, and from what I understand on the other one, they work very well with us. So, I just wanted to make that point and, you know, thank them for working as well as they did with us to get us to the point where we are tonight.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you for reminding me not to skip through discussion, Mr. Tyler. Mrs. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Gales?
Yes.
Mr. Withers, yes. Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Storrs?
Yes.
You will let their representatives know?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, we have minutes from our June 26, 2017 meeting. Minutes were circulated with your materials. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to our consent agenda, motion to, motion to accept a donation for an amount of $1,687.53 from Mark Cooper to the Arabo Public Schools for Educational Needs.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Thank you, Mark Cooper. Thank you, Mark Cooper. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to deem the 245 Hill Roberts obsolete and/or poor-conditioned library books referenced in the June 27, 2017 memorandum as surplus.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. You read those into. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Subcommittee report. Mrs. Gales?
Yeah, I'm just making, letting you know that we're, we're moving from the table, and they will go into immediate fact, policy regulation ADCR-1, the Arabo Health Department Regulation 23, policy JH, student absences and excuses, policy JHE-1, attendance notification, JHD, exclusions and exemptions from school attendance, JICH, alcohol, tobacco, and drug use by students, and JKAA, physical restraint policy procedures. So.
Thank you, Mrs. Gales. Alright, open forum. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the school committee at open forum? Alright, that'll conclude open forum.
No, you know, I did have something on the facility. I just remembered, I saw my note. Can you tell us the status of the BICO move?
The last kind of debrief I received was that they, as we suspected, are having some, some issues with the building and expect to be here through December. So, we've, we've constructed a monthly contract, as discussed, and I gave them one to sign, which hasn't been executed yet, for occupancy in September, October, November, December, with options to extend if we needed to.
Okay, thank you. So.
Mrs. Storrs?
Could you reiterate, what is the monthly rent?
Nine thousand seventy-five.
So, effectively, just took the existing one and broke it up over 10 months?
Yeah, by 10, yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else? Executive session, the Arabo School Committee will convene an executive session pursuant to master laws, Chapter 30A, Section 20. Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, A two and three, to discuss strategy with respect to negotiations with union personnel and to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, as the open me, as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the school committee. The school committee will not reconvene in an open session.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Uh, Mr. Storrs?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Withers?
Yes.
Mrs. Scales?
Yes.
Mr. Sawyer?
Yes.
All right, let's take, uh, two minutes.